Here.
Roberts? Here.
Woo?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Eric.
Eric is approaching.
All right, we'll just, here comes Eric, we'll just wait for him for the next 10 seconds. While we're waiting, um, okay, so, um, the first item is approval of the minutes of previous meetings from October 14th, 2019.
I'll move approval of those minutes. I'll move that approval.
Okay, anybody to second?
I'll second it with a correction.
Okay, with the correction, moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis, and what is the correction, Dennis?
Um, I was actually present at the meeting, but they forgot for some reason to list my name in the "those present." And it's proof because I actually approved the minutes of that meeting, so.
Okay.
So I actually participated in it, and it's recorded, but...
Not listed.
But I'm not listed up in the electoral officials.
All right, thank you, and Charlie will make that, um...
Not that really that many people care, but, you know, just to make it legal, you know?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes with the correction that Dennis Roberts was in fact in, um, in attendance of the meeting. Can I, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okey dokey. Next, additions to the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, no additions to the agenda. Presentations, do we have any presentations tonight? And no, we do not have any presentations. Public input, and public input I do have from Esther Pat, um, regarding the downtown-to-campus plan, which is not on the agenda tonight. Would you like to speak now, Ms. Pat? Okey dokey.
I'm Esther Pat, I live at 706 South Kohler, and I saw the short agenda, and this is about something that happened last week, so I thought I'd come tonight. First, I want to thank you for your thoughtful consideration of and vote on the variance request last week. In the discussion, Mr. Roberts asked a question that led to a little back-and-forth that maybe think I should come here and maybe inform or refresh the memories of council members about the campus-to-downtown plan. Uh, first, the plan was not written by the Westerboro and Neighbors Association, it was written by the city planning staff under then-mayor Jeff Markland, and at the direction of the city council in response to concerns that were raised by people living east of Lincoln Avenue. The fact that the plan was adopted by the city council 28 years ago does not make it obsolete or any less valid than it was then. Just like the historic preservation ordinance, human rights ordinance, the entire purpose of the plan was to preserve, and in this case, to preserve for the long run, the balance of the neighborhood that existed at that time with predominant land uses being owner-occupied single-family homes, but a significant number of duplexes, uh, rooming houses, and apartment buildings like the 92-year-old building in which I live. The reason for the plan and the downzoning was that the area from Lincoln to Race Street was and will always be attractive to income property owners and developers because of its close proximity to the U of I. And so, there was interest in protecting that single-family character from excessive development. Uh, as you were told, Mayor Markland vetoed the plan because developers were against it, he was against it, his staff was against it, but the council overrode the veto. 10 years later, a property owner, Howard Wakeland, sued the city of Urbana, challenging the city's right to downzone. He wanted to build a 32-unit apartment building on Main Street, two doors down from Eric Jacobson's home, and a spot that had had a single-family home that burned down in a fire. Uh, the city attorney wanted to settle and let him build the 32-unit building, but put a pitched roof and a porch around it to make it look kind of like a house. Uh, the staff were against it, the neighbors were against it, and so the city attorney went ahead and took the case to the appellate court where the city of Urbana won. And although there was already precedent on this issue, there's now appellate court precedent in our appellate district that cities have the right to downzone to single-family for the purpose of protecting the, the single-family nature of a neighborhood. I urge you to think about the fact that in every other context, your planning staff and you folks promote the idea that owner-occupied housing stabilizes neighborhoods, whether you're talking about crime, community development, affordable housing, so everything's homeownership, homeownership. Well, the people who live in Westerboro, they care about homeownership too. And, um, when the comprehensive plan review starts, I guarantee you, there are going to be people coming to you asking you to change those boundaries that they're zoned out to, to come south of High Street, to go east of Bucy, and maybe even to throw the whole thing out, and I hope that you will stand by the intent and the purpose of the plan and protect the maintenance of a stable, single-family neighborhood east of Lincoln Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have, um, are there any questions for Ms. Pat before she, any comments? Okay. We have a, um, input card here from, uh, Bishop King James Underwood and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood regarding the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. They do not wish to address the members, but they are, you know, still concerned regarding the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem, it's still a concern of ours. Thank you. Um, gentleman Steve Ross, Mr. Ross, did you care to, would you care to, okay, this is regarding snow removal, which is on the agenda, and he is in opposition.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Steve Ross, I live at 609 West Green Street in Urbana, um, and I'm here speaking on my own behalf, but I think I represent also the, uh, some of the thoughts of Dan Newman, who, uh, I hope you've seen an email from Dan regarding his opposition as well to the snow removal, uh, expansion, I guess. I'll say that I've lived there 20 years now, and I've always considered it my civic duty to remove the snow from the, uh, from the sidewalk, and I am sure that I probably usually get it done in the 24 hours that this ordinance is, is requiring now, or would require, but I'm certain I don't do it all the time. You know, just things come up, work your way, and, uh, so I guess I'm here as a crotchety old man, sort of, to complain about this. I will, uh, I'll follow Dan Newman's outline that he used in his, his note. The first point is pretty brief, safety. We agree that a shoveled walk is much more safe than an unshovelled walk, especially one that's compacted and that's got ice on it. Uh, there's no, there's no argument about, uh, safety, a shoveled walk is better. The second item that Dan brought up was fairness, and I'll return to that in a, in a minute, because that's where I think most of my comments are. And the third one is the efficiency. I think Dan makes a good point that, um, it's not very efficient to have, if you can imagine, having every different property owner up and down Green Street involved in trying to, uh, clear their own walk, or hire someone to do it, and have those people come, just, you know, a variety of people come and do it, very inefficient. It's not something that the, the city of Urbana does, for example. If we were be, uh, you know, the snowplows are, they go down all the roads, and, uh, there's one source for it, and we pay taxes for it, and that's reasonable. And if, um, uh, if, if there would be a tax hike to pay for clearing, the city clearing our sidewalks, that seems a lot more reasonable to me than having everyone do their own, or be responsible for hiring someone to clear their own sidewalk. And then Dan's second point, which is my final point, is the fairness of this. I find this very unfair. I'm not sure why Green Street and University were singled out. I don't believe there's any documentation, that I'm aware of, any data that would say that, that those are the most heavily-traveled pedestrian routes. I would say probably Illinois Street is a, is a contender for that title. And, uh, if I was in, if I was dictator, I would mandate, um, clearing sidewalks around the schools. I've walked my kids to Lille School for 19 years, and there's always a week or two or more of time when we just, we're just walking in the street, because the sidewalks are, you know, they're not cleared. So, the real need, to my mind, is not green or university, it's around, um, it's around the elementary schools and middle school and high school. So, um, the other point I would make is that if this would become an ordinance for the city, it would be terribly unfair just to burden those of us on Green Street and University with this, um, this requirement to get things cleaned up in 24 hours. Again, when, when the city clears streets, they clear all the streets. So, if the city is going to require that sidewalks be cleared, why not require all the sidewalks to be cleared? Then you, as property owners, would be under the same burden that I will be under to clean in within 24 hours, or face a fine of, I think, $25 administrate, well, I don't, $25 fine, $55 administrative fee, I think the website says, and then the cost of hiring someone to do it. So, this isn't a trivial amount of money. So, let's see, I think that's most of my points. That's the highlights, I guess.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ross.
You're welcome.
Are there any comments regarding, or any questions?
Yeah, do you have time to, uh, hang around for us to discuss it? Because we, our rules are that we can ask you questions, but we can't really discuss it with you until we're just, until the item's on the, on the floor, but we have a short agenda tonight, so.
Okay.
Perhaps that would be good.
Sure, I can do that, thank you.
Okay.
And...
Yeah, Dennis?
Yeah, if there's not any more comments from the public, I've got, um, comment or announcement?
Well, there's one more, I mean...
Okay, good.
And this is actually just an acknowledgement that Dan Newman sent an email to all of us, I think, regarding the snow removal as well, and this is a printed version of that letter. So, I think I'm done with public input, and, um, go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, it's kind of like public input. First, I'd like to, um, say what a great experience it was this weekend to participate in as an observer and a dancer and a music appreciator to the, uh, the 2019 Champagne Urbana Folk and Roads Festival held in our downtown. Numerous venues were open constantly, and people were walking back and forth, even if it rained, it didn't seem to matter at all. A lot of participation from the community, really excellent. Musicians came and played at all the different time periods and slots in the schedule, and it was exciting to see how many people, uh, were coming and going in the downtown area on Friday and Saturday night, so, and also during the daytime. I heard a really great performance at the public library here, the Urbana Free Library, mid-afternoon, other musicians throughout the whole time. Really enjoyed, um, dancing, uh, to the Colesmore Music at the, um, Urbana Dance Company upstairs. So, I just want to mention that, I think it was a successful event, and I'm really glad that the city participates by funding it through the Arts Commission, and I think we should continue to do that in the future. And then the second thing I want to mention is that, um, the Urbana Sister City program is sending a delegation in November to Tionville, our sister city in France, in the far northeast corner of France. Uh, we're going because we, uh, this is the second time that they have invited us in five years to visit with them as a delegation, and we're going to help them celebrate the 75th anniversary of their liberation of their town at the end of World War II, uh, and there'll be a series of commemorative events, wreath lanes, parades, speeches, and fun. So, we're going to have, uh, six people from the city are, have chosen to, to go on this trip, I'll be going myself, they're all paying their own way to do this, and it is to establish and continue our friendship with another partnering city, you know, around the world, and it's the goal of the Sister Cities Program to build these kinds of international friendships, to build understanding and cooperation among people.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, any staff reports tonight? No staff reports? Okey dokey. So, we have an ordinance on the agenda to consider, ordinance number 2019-10060, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 11, Section 1165, removing snow from sidewalks and other areas, and this is from Public Works in, Carol?
I'll be introducing this piece.
Okay.
As you may recall, um, in July, um, Bill Brown, on behalf of the, of BPAC, brought forward a recommendation to expand the, um, areas that have mandatory sidewalk snow removal when it's, uh, when circumstances warrant and the, and the, um, ordinance is invoked by the, um, Director of Public Works, and this item is merely bringing that, that proposal forward for council consideration. I passed out a, a color map, there had been a black and white map in your packets, to show the expansion area, and, um, I will just say, and, and perhaps Bill wants to, to add to this, that I think the, um, impetus for the, and timing of this proposal is, um, based on the infrastructure investments that will be made in University Avenue and in Green Street in the form of the I.DOT rebuilding project on University Avenue, and then the EMCOR Phase 5 project on Green Street, and so, um, the idea for, you know, singling out these two corridors is related to the significant infrastructure investment and trying to make maximum use of that investment. So, I don't know if Bill wants to add anything to that?
Sure. Yeah, I think that was the main impetus for those two corridors. BPAC would love to have everybody in town clear their sidewalks, or even do our Safe Routes to Schools sidewalks, that was another thing we talked about. Um, I think the main reason we limited it to just these two corridors and the commercial areas in downtown and North Campus. North Campus obviously has a lot of foot traffic. It's mostly for practicality, I mean, I think we determined there were four owner-occupied homes on Green Street. The people who own the multi-unit apartment buildings are already hiring somebody to clear their own sidewalks, and they typically will clear street sidewalks, but if not, they have somebody there. Um, they're required to, I think if there's more than four units, is that right, Esther? Multi-family properties are required to clear their own sidewalks, not the street, not the city sidewalks, but if they're, they have somebody there doing that, that, that was part of the rationale for, um, because we did look at Green Street pretty closely and University Avenue, and would have loved to include areas around schools, but if 50% of the property owners on Green Street show up tonight, imagine if 50% of the property owners all over town showed up. So, really, it was kind of a practical issue, I think. And, um, you know, having one, one property not clear, or one block not clear, really kind of rucks your whole walk if you're, if you're trying to get from one end of town to the other, and, or from downtown to campus, so, we included the whole corridor. I don't know how many, I, I know, it's 24 hours after an event is declared, and it usually takes 24 hours after the snow stops, and, um, before the Public Works Director even declares an event, so it's usually 48 hours. I don't remember how many times there was actually a event declared this past year, but I do know that, I do remember a couple of times where the snow had pretty much melted by the time it was declared, so I think it's pretty rare. I don't know if you have any figures.
I have some, I have some data on that, if you're interested. So, it, I have it broken down by calendar year, just for ease, so, which, we're not out of 2019, so it could still happen in 2019, but we've had two so far from last winter in 2019. We had six in 2018, five in 2017, three in 2016, um, and to the point that you were trying to make about, it, it doesn't get declared until the snow stops, and then, um, people have 24 hours, and the first thing that we do after we, after we give the 24-hour elap, um, time elapsed, then we go out and if there are any, um, people who haven't complied, then they get a warning, and then they have another 24 hours after the warning, and so, you might be interested to know that in 2018, we issued 17 warning notices and only ended up doing six abatements. In 2017, we did, issued 20 warning notices, only did four abatements. 2016, we issued 14 warning notices and did five abatements. So, you know, in, in some sense, it, it works, because we say, okay, come on, we give the nudge, and then we typically get the results, and then for those few that don't, we get compliance a different way.
And I did, um, when I presented this in July, I compared it to what Champagne currently has, their area is, is twice as big as ours, basically, there, it covers everything from campus to downtown. So, I don't think it's out of the ordinary. Yeah, I'd like to see it all over town, and I'm sure BPAC would too, but I think we tried to keep it to what was, um, obtainable, attainable, obtainable in the short term.
Bill, can I ask you a question? So, um, with the proposed expansion on this, are these basically bike-lane streets?
Uh, this, no, uh, no, Green Street, Street will be with EMCOR. We didn't really consider bike lanes, because that's, bike lanes on the street would be cleared by the plows, anyway.
Okay, so it's basically, you're just talking about the sidewalks for people to, to be able to, um, walk down the sidewalks?
They're, they are bus, bus stop areas, and there's a lot of bus stops on Green Street, and there'll be more with EMCOR, but yeah, um, you know, Springfield would be an obvious one, except there's a whole block of Springfield that only has sidewalk on one side, and, um, Main is probably the next one that would be good, but there's not as much bus traffic on Main. I don't know if there's any bus traffic on Main.
Yes, there is, I think there is.
Is it?
Yeah. I've been behind the buses. Jared?
Did you, when you were collecting all those citations, do we know how many, uh, commercial properties and residential properties lie within the districts currently? We probably didn't look that up, I'm guessing.
Uh, even when we prepared the list, um, well, we, we had sent out notices to each individual property owner who was going to be included in the new area, but I had, I don't have any information at all about the existing area, any kind of breakdown.
How many are in the new area? Commercial and residential?
I, I don't have that at my fingertips, I'm sorry, but I could get that for you.
But presumably, there's a lot.
There were, oh, yeah, there, there are a lot of individual properties.
I mean, we're talking about hundreds of properties.
Yeah, but a lot of them are individual properties owned by the university, for instance.
Okay. But, uh, I'm just going for scale of effect, you know, you said we issued how many abatements total over like the last three years that you just gave us data?
The last three years, total abatements were 15.
Okay, out of hundreds of properties?
Oh, yeah.
In multiple events each year, so on and so forth?
Yeah.
Okay, just, can, I just wanted to put that in my head, if that's what that was.
I see, okay.
Thanks.
Carol, can it, anybody else, you have a question, Mary Alice, go ahead.
Yeah, I do. So, I'm looking at, um, the new areas that are shaded in pink here, and on the east side, sorry, the west side, so between Lincoln and Wright Street, that item, just north of Springfield, that's, I think all of the stuff on the east from Matthews over is University of Illinois property. Um, a lot of the properties from, I would say, Goodwin to North Lincoln and University are commercial. I can't think of a single, single-family residence there, but perhaps I'm wrong. So, so really, I think in terms of the single-family residences, the ones that are most impacted are on West Green Street. And I personally know of three single-family residents, I mean, I haven't walked down there and counted. Bill, you had said that there were four, does that include properties that would not meet the four-unit requirement that we currently have on the books?
I think, uh, when we checked, we looked at, um, the, the properties that had the, the code in the tax tables, um, that indicated they were owner-occupied, and I, I think there were only four that showed up.
I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, of the properties that exist on Green Street, how many who were not affected would now be affected? So, if we, if we require that four units?
Oh.
So, that's what I'm, I'm trying to figure out, how many parcels this impacts?
Well, even with the four units, we don't require them to clear street, uh, street sidewalks, they only have to require, have to clear the sidewalk from the street sidewalk to their front door, and steps and things like that, anything on their property.
I mean, my major concern is, is that property owners, they have people set up to shovel their sidewalks, to, um, go ahead and do the driveways and so forth, but single-family residences, for the most part, don't. And, um, if they're on vacation for two weeks during the winter, which a lot of people go out of town, what are they supposed to do? In addition, like, how do you find people who are going to shovel? I, I know I've tried to find people to shovel, I know other people have tried to find people to shovel, and you can't, you can't get people to come and shovel sidewalks, or it's very sporadic. So, A, I would like to know how many properties, um, that aren't four units would be impacted, that are not commercial and are not four units? So, we can have an understanding of that. I'd also like to hear from, uh, staff, or, or maybe even from Bill, why not one side of West Green? Why not just clear one side of it instead of both sides?
And buses stop on both sides, that would be the main argument, I guess, is if you're going to have a corridor, you might as well have it on both sides.
I'm just wondering if we can impact fewer households, single-family residents?
I mean, I guess you could require it on the north side, because the sun hits that a little bit more, but I wouldn't be in favor of that, I'd want to keep it to both sides.
Um, and does the city have any recommendations on how property owners will have their sidewalks cleared? Do we have a list of people that people could look up online, and, I mean, so...
No.
We do not, so we don't have any kind of resources?
It doesn't mean that we couldn't attempt to, to develop such a list, but we don't have that now.
And my last question is, is there a way to get a rough estimate on how much it would cost the city to just clear from Race Street to Lincoln, those two sides of Green Street?
Um, I think, I mean, we could, we could make an attempt to estimate it, we'd have to bid it out. As I, as I think I mentioned, um, what we plan to do on the, on the compliance end of this is to have an on-call contract with, um, someone yet to be identified to do the clearing rather than have staff do it, so, um, we can probably get a sense, once we bid that out, of what it would cost to, to just contract all, all that work out.
Okay. I would be interested in that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Yeah, I, I guess, can we, can we be in discussion, or we need, we need to make a motion?
We need to make a motion, and, and then we can discuss.
All right.
Okay, Jared?
Uh, just judging from where this is going, I'll make a motion that, uh, we send ordinance number 2019-10-060, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 11, Section 11-65, regarding moving snow from sidewalks and other areas, uh, to, forward to the full council with no recommendation at this time.
I'll second that.
It has been moved by Jared and seconded by Mary Alice for this ordinance to be moved to the city council without any recommendation.
No recommendation.
Okay, thank you, now, discussion. Dennis?
Yeah, um, I think I can understand the, the interest for, uh, creating these new, um, corridors of snow removal, but, as I understand it, neither project on University or on Green Street will be achieved this fall, and so, it would seem to me that this ordinance is almost a year ahead of itself, that it would be after the improvements are made that we would want to adopt this ordinance, because those improvements haven't been done, the street reconfigurations haven't taken place, and I think that it would be interesting to find out, to have a study, a comparison about pedestrian, uh, use of these two corridors. I know that we're going to have a lot more significant use because of the new developments that have taken place at Lincoln, North Lincoln, and University. The one on the north side of, of, um, University Avenue is open, and people are already coming and going there, but the proposed development for the southeast corner hasn't even broken ground yet. So, um, I'm just wondering if, uh, this probably is a good idea, but... So I'm just wondering if this probably is a good idea, but maybe it's one that we should adopt next year and just keep it on the books as far as like intent.
Bill?
Yeah, I mean, for the corridors, you can think about that. That's a small part of what we included in the recommendation. I mean, you could, if we did it this year, you'd at least have a year to try out the, you know, the new procedure of having a contractor. I think it'd be a good trial period, maybe for those two corridors, if you want to hold off on issuing citations or something like that, we could do that. That could be administratively handled. For the other two areas, I mean, north campus has been a busy area for a long time. It's mostly, most of the corners are ADA ramps. It's, you know, our whole campus is very accessible, except in the wintertime, when people don't shovel their sidewalks. So I think there's a good argument for that being well past due rather than ahead of time. For north downtown to Crystal Lake Park, that's very timely because Crystal Lake Park has just put in the whole 10-foot wide path along Park Street that connects the hospitals to Five Points and downtown. The whole north downtown area has been developing quite a bit the past few years with, you know, the Broadway Food Hall and the, well, all of, the whole Gateway Shops area and everything along Broadway and the Boneyard and the 25 o'clock brewery, all that, you know, is pretty new, pretty done. So I think that's probably past due too. I don't see any reason to try to delay this and try to spend a lot of money studying it, counting pedestrians, that it's going to change anyway over the next few years. I think we should just move forward with it. I'm going to vote against this proposal and if it, because I think it should have a recommendation for approval, but if it, so if it fails, I'll make another motion to forward it with recommendation for approval.
Can I say something?
Yeah, I'll take the chair and recognize Ms. Hershey.
Thank you. So my question is basically, how much of this falls on university property and will they be held accountable for making sure that their sidewalks are indeed cleared? And how will we get them to clear it if they don't? What's going to happen? Carol?
Based on the number of parcels, I would say about a quarter of the parcels. I don't know how that translates into street frontage, but in terms of the overall number of parcels, maybe 25% are university and we treat them as we would any other property owner.
Okay.
If they don't clear it, we clear it for them and then bill them.
Okay, I just wanted to know that everybody is going to be, in fact, be, you know, if there's going, if, the way this is, may affect businesses and homeowners and everything, I just, I know that, you know, in my neighborhood, how long it took to get somebody to cut the grass on Goodwin. And it's kind of like, I think it was Bill that was saying, by the time they get around to it, you know, the snow could be melted. And then what do you do? So.
Well, the objective for this is to get the snow cleared and if the sun helps, that's fine.
Okay. So I'll kind of go along with Dennis on this. Okay, thank you, Jacob. And now, Mary Alice.
So my first question, I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure. So they're on North Vine Street, right below University, that's the viaduct, and I'm curious who, how that's going to be shoveled. I'm assuming that's the contract that you're talking about?
I'm going to look, because we were just passing around today, all the locations where we clear sidewalks now in priority order. So I will, I will get that and let you know. We may be shoveling all that right now.
So, two things. A, it would be great to know in terms of, if we can have it colored in, what number of sidewalks are going to be done by the U of I, because they got quite the crew out there in order to clear those sidewalks. B, it would be good to know out of, to shade in the areas in which the city will continue to be responsible for. And C, I would be supportive of pretty much what Dennis had said, which is to hold off on that, those two corridors. And what Bill had mentioned is approving the area north of Springfield and north of Water. I would move forward with that personally.
Okay, Dean?
Wow, I guess I should dye my hair red or something.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, sweetie. You sit back there.
You wouldn't see my hair.
Y'all laid back.
I have a question for council. Is there any liability in, civil liability in not shoveling your sidewalk? There's a point to my question, but.
I haven't looked at the case law lately, but in the past, no. It's an act of God.
Okay. Let me bear with me while I read one short paragraph from the ILCS. It's 745 ILCS 75/2. Any owner, lease or occupant or other person in charge of any residential property or any agent of or other person engaged by any such party who removes or attempts to remove snow or ice from sidewalks abutting the property shall not be liable for any personal injuries allegedly caused by the snow or ice condition of the sidewalk resulting from his or her acts or omissions unless the alleged misconduct was willful or wanton. So what that says to me is there's possibly liability in shoveling your sidewalk.
No.
Unless it's willful or wanton. So there's liability that people can claim that it was willful or wanton. It doesn't define willful or wanton, so.
Well, willful or wanton, you know, for instance, throwing down water, letting it freeze.
It doesn't define it. Well, maybe there's other precedents.
I mean, it has to be on almost the order of intentional unlawful conduct. Willful or wanton, you know, in order of decreasing difficulty and proof would be intentional, the highest, willful, wanton, gross negligence, and then just plain negligence. The reason that act came into existence because at one point, case law did provide the opposite of what that act provides, i.e. if you shovel, it may create ice and you could be liable for altering an act of God. That statute, I don't recall how old it is, but as I recall, it's relatively old. And that is to counter the case law that creates liability. But they did carve out, as you suggest, a provision for willful and wanton conduct. That means almost, if not in fact, intentional, willful, wanton, unlawful conduct.
Okay. Well, I wasn't arguing that to either point. It was just more informational so that we're aware of it. So thank you.
Jake, Eric?
Sure. Now, I just, as I read the ordinance, my understanding of choosing Green Street, one of the reasons was to encourage pedestrians to choose Green Street rather than to choose Illinois. That is, if there, and to guarantee that there would be one clear path between campus and downtown. And because of the MCOR project and because, you know, Green Street really is sort of the campus's main street, that Green Street was the logical choice. Am I paraphrasing, you know, your thinking accurately or the thinking of the commission?
Well, I think that's part of it. I think people, more people would choose Green Street if they knew it was clear. I think MCOR was kind of the main driving idea because presumably it will be used more because it's going to be more walk-friendly and I guess, you know, better bus facilities and everything. A lot of people are probably using Illinois now because people are pretty good about shoveling there. You know, I don't know if it would make people go from Illinois to Green Street if people continue to shovel on Illinois, but, I mean, with the hotel, potential hotel development and other downtown stuff happening, I think that was just another reason to consider it. They're just a combination of things, I think.
Eric, go ahead.
So I would be, I mean, this is not going to happen immediately, but I would be very receptive to the idea that the city would actually assume responsibility for clearing the sidewalks, so that all the sidewalks would be cleared, to do for foot traffic what we do for vehicular traffic. Now, I understand that that costs money and we are just going into what we hope will be the last budget year of working through our structural deficit. But when we, you know, are up for air, or if we feel we can justify a, an actual additional tax to pay for this, I would very much like us to, and of course, when you are, you know, I mean, you're doing several jobs now, but we have a permitted public works director and, you know, we're really stable that way. I would really urge consideration of, you know, the cost and the cost-effectiveness of doing that. I like that concept. Before we came to Illinois, we lived in Shaker Heights, Ohio. And Shaker Heights gets a tremendous amount of lake effect snow, of Lake Erie, and the city cleared the sidewalks. Now, you know, we paid for it, but it was a lot more dramatic. The effect of having the sidewalks cleared was a lot more dramatic than the increment on the tax bill. I think that's an idea that we should really seriously consider.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Bill.
I think another reason, we limited it to these corridors and these areas, is just for compliance purposes. We thought this was obtainable, that people would mostly comply, that it wouldn't be a really hard thing for these apartment buildings who are already shoveling their locks and their stairs to go out and shovel the city sidewalks. If we were to require it citywide of property owners, it would be almost impossible to enforce. In fact, I think Boulder requires it citywide and I was checking today how much that actually helps and most people in Boulder say people ignore it. It doesn't work. So I think by narrowing it to these corridors, these areas, these high-traffic areas, these high-commercial areas, I think it's relatively easy to enforce. The university's already doing a huge job. You could get an idea of what it would cost if you see how much the university spent on their sidewalk clearing, but if you can imagine, there's twice as many sidewalks basically as there are streets, for the most part. There's some areas that don't have sidewalks. The equipment would have to move a lot slower. You can't really go down a sidewalk at 20 miles per hour and throw snow and hit bumps and trees and everything. It would just be, I don't think you could even, you know, without 50 pieces of equipment and 50 people doing it all at once, I don't think you could even clear it in a day or two after a snow event. Just my, you know, just thinking about it, I don't think it would work. You know, in other countries, people just go out and they do their sidewalks, they sweep their streets. Charlie just came back from Japan. He probably can, has stories about how well people work together to get things done there. So I don't think this is a huge ask. And I lied, I am going to vote for this because now I'm worried that nothing would pass if I voted no.
Okay, Jared? And then Carol. Go ahead, Jared.
We've got my motion, and I know it's not the one you wanted, Bill, but I think we've all asked for some additional information another week to consider voting on it. I'd be open to pros and cons, more to hear about from folks, but I'm not going to withdraw the motion. Motion, I'd stand by it. I think we should vote.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I already seconded.
Okay, so even seconded, even with the no recommendation? Okay, and all in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so the ayes have it. And next, we have ordinance number 20019-10061, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 2, Section 2-27, Rules for Deliberations, 2019. And that's been brought forward by the city clerk, Charlie Smythe. Charlie?
Yeah, this is just a further tweak to our agenda and process. There's a little fix in there. We didn't include the roll call and attendance, or the call to order and attendance earlier. And this gives council a little more flexibility, which was the intention of putting the word presentations in the agenda. And now, without a motion, you can simply, the chair or the council can agree, you want to do a presentation first, you want to do public input first from a particular individual, and you'll just be free to just do what you need to do at that time.
Do them both at the same time?
Right, yes, yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion for carrying this, council? Mary Alice?
I move the ordinance number 2019-10061, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 2, Section 2-27, Rules for Deliberation. We move forward to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mary Alice has moved for it to go for approval, moved for approval to the council and Eric has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion regarding this motion? Dennis?
Yeah, so then how do we have a conversation or how do we decide if we want to withhold the presentations till after public input? We just have like a straw vote before we?
Essentially, I think it's, you know, in my experience with presentations and public input is that we've had the, we've had a pretty obvious need, either, you know, there's people here to hear the presentation and they want to comment, or there are some people available who are present who want to speak to something that's not related and just simply want to get in and get out. And I think council has judged that and chose from the right path in the past by consensus.
Yeah, I would say that for the most part, people who wanted to make public input, like probably 85% of them don't want to actually stay for the event when it's actually discussed. They just want to express their input and then they go leave. They go and they've said their say. And it's really tedious if you have two 20-minute presentations to wait for public input to make those comments. You have to wait for some presentation you have zero interest in and you're sitting in the audience waiting to do your public input. So, I mean, I thought that we were in pretty good shape when we had public input and then presentations. Very few people come to make comments on the presentations. They come to make comments on the known agenda. And a lot of times, the presentations aren't really clarified. Sometimes they are, but they're not always. So I guess this is kind of a fudge. I thought we were actually, some of this seems superfluous, but I thought we were actually had the order appropriate when we started with public input and then presentations.
Any other comments, discussion regarding this motion? Bill?
I think I like the flexibility of being able to do it either way. There have been times where we've had a presentation like from, a lot of times when we've had a presentation from UBA or from the visitor bureau, something like that. And there's also a hot topic on the agenda where you have 20 people wanting to do public input. So in cases like that where you have, you know you're going to have an hour of public input, I guess you could ask people from UBA or wherever to come back, but sometimes they're from out of town or out of state. I think it makes sense for these short five, 10-minute presentations to allow them to go before public input. So I appreciate having the flexibility, I guess.
Okay. Jared?
Not that it's not under practice, if somebody shows up after a public input period and we get a public input card that we don't allow them to speak, we always do, but is there any reason we couldn't officially list it both before and after so that the people who wanted to talk before could talk and leave and then the people who wanted to stay and hear the whole thing and then say their piece could comment after? I mean, I know we do it anyway on occasion, but thoughts on that, Charlie?
Yeah, the form already indicates whether you want to speak, you know, during public input or at the time of a topic.
Or before.
And I think, and, yeah, and before. So I think, I think it's more allowing the chair or chair or the council as a whole to judge the situation. I think Bill accurately described what I'm trying, what I was trying to achieve. I understand where Dennis is coming from. And, yeah, that's the usual situation that you'll find yourself in, just a few people who want to speak and are not here for the presentation. And I think you just want that flexibility. Hopefully, this achieves that. But there are times when presentations should probably be done, especially if you've got an out-of-town paid consultant or something, and it's going to be five or 10 minutes long. This gives you that flexibility.
Eric, would you take the chair for a minute?
Thank you. I'll take the chair, and I believe Ms. Hersi would like to be recognized.
Yes. Charlie, I guess my question is, what is considered a presentation as well? I know that one night with the IMC and we had the 10-minute statement, you know, and then there were several people who had to come up and make, you know, say their piece, like 37 people or something. So I was just wondering, is it considered a presentation if someone does a statement that takes more than five minutes during the public input?
Well, this comes into the ability of council to modify rules as it sees fit.
Okay.
You know, so technically, the presentations that are listed, when they're listed on the agenda, are invited. They're organized in some fashion. And we have a general idea that they're going to be five, 10, or even 20 minutes long, depending on the topic. So those are usually known in advance. Something like, that happened in this particular case, that was spontaneous. There really wasn't any...
And it was during a COW meeting.
And the situation was that the chair could have stopped the presentation, or the speech after five minutes. That's within the rules for public input. And it's up to council to extend the time past five minutes for public, for each individual speaker of public input. Likewise, we have a rule that limits, you know, when you have 20 or more people want to speak, then you tell people they've got three minutes instead of five so that the public business can be done. The state law simply requires that public input be allowed, that, and the council is allowed to make rules around that. I'm trying to remember exactly how it works, but I think, you know, we have a two-hour limit total for public input so that you can get to city council business in an evening.
Okay, thanks.
But that's up to council to enforce and to agree when to provide exceptions.
And so your ordinance amending that, you feel is just going to make it easier for us to...
It recognizes what I consider the practice that, in my experience of 16 years on council.
Just make it more fluid. We can decide what is okay and what is, when we need to pull the reins back.
Yes.
Okey-dokey. Thank you, Eric.
I will now return the chair back to Ms. Hersi.
Thank you. Mayor Marlin?
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this during announcements section. Tomorrow and Wednesday, I will be putting on my hat as the local liquor commissioner and with our city attorney and the deputy local liquor commissioner. And we'll be presenting the draft liquor code to current licensed owners. And actually, it's open to the public, you know, it's open to anybody who wants to come. But tomorrow afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00, we'll be doing a presentation on the new liquor code. And then again, on Wednesday morning from, I believe it's 9:00 to 11:00, and in the city council chambers. And we'll also be recording the session so it'll be available for people to watch at their leisure. But we'll be explaining the new code and new provisions and be available to answer questions. And following this, we'll be taking comments, we'll take all the comments we get, plus we'll be doing an internal staff review between November and January and hope to roll out the proposed ordinance in February for your consideration. But tomorrow and Wednesday is the time we introduce it to the license holders.
Okay, thank you. Dennis?
All right, so going back to the, how we conduct business here in the council, probably, I guess it would be, I could see this as working at the discretion of the chair. The chair pretty much leads the meeting anyway and can order the agenda if necessary. And they also are the ones who receive the public input cards. And so if you have a stack of 20, you know that public input's going to be a very big part of the meeting. And then you have to just weigh whether it's more important to have the public to speak first, which are the local constituency of our community, or to have the individual representing some NGO or, you know, public official or something from, to talk about a topic. So I guess it'll work. So I guess I'll probably support it.
Okay, so we have, thank you, Dennis. We have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Now, considering we don't have any new business, any old business, I see this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.